Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the February 10th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. And first order of business, if you have pagers or cellphones, I would ask that you turn those off or silence them at this time so we don't hear them. If you are not the applicant and you're here to talk to us about a case and you haven't already done so, you can sign one of these little forms. They're on the table outside the chambers. Give them to our secretary and we'd be happy to hear you when the case is up on the agenda. And first item is approval of the minutes for January 27th.
We have approval of the minutes.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes and the minutes are approved. And continue its request, Russell.
We have two uncontested requests for continuance. Item 14 is PUD 1426, request to continue that until February the 24th. And item 15, C 6264, has been withdrawn.
Did anyone come to talk to us about either of those items today?
Over the uncontested continuances.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the continuances. Cast your votes and that's approved.
There are two new requests for continuance. Item 2 is S P U D 601 for February the 24th. And item 13, PUD 1432, request to continue until March the 10th.
And same question again. Did anyone come today to talk to us about either of those items?
Mr. Chairman, I would request another one to be continued if Mr. Box would come up. That's item number six.
Well, let's take the two that no one else wants to address us on, pass those and then we'll discuss this one.
Okay, all right, good.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve continuing items three and 13. Is that right?
Two and 13.
Two and 13, I'm sorry. Cast your votes and that's approved. And now we're talking about item six, Jim, is that right?
Yes, sir. Dennis, I told you this morning when I talked to you that I was going to go by out and look at that site and I was appalled. You know, the fence, the screen fence that's been put up is coming down. It's been hit, it's leaning. They've got, you know, we've got Mount Trashmore on 240. This is Mount Metalmore on I-35. This is an appearance corridor. And I don't know what the height of this metal can be, but it's too high. I don't, you know, it's just one of those things that, it looks terrible. There's old tires, there's old motors, there's old batteries, there's old cars, there's all kinds of stuff that's piled up there. And I'm not sure that the EPA wouldn't do something really drastic if they were to go out there. And maybe they do, I don't know. On an I-3 zoning, they probably monitor it pretty close. But there's a concrete drainage ditch that goes along the west side of that property. And I don't know where that drainage water goes, but that, you know, that's something that really needs to be looked at, I think. There was a lady this morning that called me and she sent me 25 pages, faxed me 25 pages of violations on that piece of property. And I don't know where those all came from or what they all are because I haven't looked at them. And, you know, we've got letters from neighbors and talking to the neighbor, to the, to the south of there, the concrete plant. Well, this one protest says that there's been 30, they've been burglarized 30 times and their fence has been cut 15 times. They spent $30,000 on repairs, on tires with debris and stuff in the road. And that's what I found when I went out there today. Of course, a lot of it was covered with snow. But before I'm going to even consider anything on that piece of property, I think there needs to be a major amount of cleanup and a major amount of good neighboring involved in that whole business there. And I think that can be done. I'm requesting the continuance. That does not necessarily mean that I'm going to be in favor of these signs when it comes up. And I'm going to recommend 60 days because I don't think that what needs to be done can be done in two weeks or 30 days. I think it's going to take longer than that. And even when that's done, I don't think, I'm not going to guarantee that I'm going to vote for these signs that are on there. And, you know, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, I can appreciate what you're saying, Dennis Fox and behalf of the applicant. If you recall, this was a site that was moved from Shields and had caused some problems there based on the intensity that was taking place on the site. Tried to find a site that was more in keeping based on I-3 and heavy industrial uses. That's not to say that every point that you haven't made isn't a good point, but it's something that I just need to have to sit down with my client and with you and go through whatever violations you've been sent. I'd like to look at that. As you indicated, the signs are totally different than the operation, but I think it's within your right to make sure that you're comfortable with the operation before you vote on a question about signing. Would it be possible to continue it 30 days knowing that if we're not completed, you'll probably request another 30-day continuance?
I would be willing to do it for 30 days, but I don't think it can be done in 30 days. But that will be my request. But we've got to be open to that because I don't think it can be cleaned up like it needs to be cleaned up in 30 days.
I will commit to you that within 30 days, I'll have my client sit down with you and anybody else you want to be at the meeting and we'll talk about operations, the violation notices that you were given and we'll just find out what's going on.
Councilman White probably would like to sit down with us also.
Okay.
Dennis, I would echo Commissioner Allen's comments and make one further and that is the, and I'm familiar with the site, I've looked at it. The only argument I've heard in support of wrapping those tanks with Coca-Cola sign is that they're not well-maintained and this would be an improvement. And that's not an argument that's persuasive to me, just so you have that information for the next 30 days.
So I need to come up with a new argument?
Yeah, that one, that one isn't going to go.
Okay.
One other thing that I didn't mention, that one of the protest letters did mention, is employee parking. And even today, there was one car parked outside on the right-of-way. And then, of course, I've been by there when there's been three or four or five deep trailers and so on and so forth out on High, both ways. So High was pretty much blocked. You couldn't even hardly get up and down High. There's something, needs to be something done with the traffic control there also and parking.
And when we have this meeting, I think we're going to find that there are some issues in that area, but they're all not related to my client. I mean, there's some, there's another scrapyard in close proximity, there's heavy trucking. So there's a number of different uses that are all within the heavy industrial area that probably contribute to some of what you're talking about.
That's exactly right. And that whole area, you know, we need to do something with that whole area because it's just an eyesore. And that's, you know, that's Oklahoma City's front door on the south. And we just need to do something with that whole area right there. And I don't know what the answer is, but, you know, we can start here.
I think that's a good point. And, Mr. Chairman, maybe that front door advertising is where we go on our point. But we'll-
Maybe we ought to either maintain those tanks or take them down if they're not being used. And I gather they're not, except-
We've got a good use for them, but we'll talk about that in 30 days. Okay. We have a motion and, Janice, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Are we, are we taking continuances?
Just one at a time, one. Since we've discussed this one, we'll wrap it up.
Okay.
I second the motion to continue, item number six.
Be March 24th.
We said 30 days.
Right.
Okay. Cast your votes and that's continued 30 days. Now, Janice, welcome back.
Thank you. It was life and death getting out of the driveway there, but I managed. I would like to see item number three continued. We met earlier this week on this matter and it is one that is moving toward resolution that I think everybody is in favor of, but we're just not quite there yet. I understand that there are some drainage issues that need to be addressed and that meetings have been set to meet with Dennis Clowers, but that he has not been able to do that prior to this meeting. There are just other issues with respect to planning on the site that are really close and everybody's, you know, got their sleeves rolled up and working hard, but we're just not quite there yet. So I would like to see, I will move, if I may, to continue item number three.
Well, let's hear from the applicant first.
Dennis Fox, on behalf of the applicant. Dan Ladon is sitting next to me. The meeting that Janice referred to and the people that, very nice neighbors that are sitting on the second row, most of them were at that meeting along with Sam Bowman. The problem that I have is the concerns that were, are being expressed, that being drainage and just working with the neighbors on the numerous issues that they're concerned about, we don't have a problem with. In fact, I think if you looked at our application and you've talked to the neighbors, I think you'd find that if we were able to acquire the three houses to the west of what our pending application is, they would be here in support of us. At least that's what I heard the other night. Our problem is, and Dan Ladon is here, if y'all have any questions of him, we have not been able to acquire the three homes to the west. I don't know if we will acquire them in a week, two weeks, two years, or ever. And that being the case, we have an application in front of you that is in conformance with your plan, we think is appropriate. We think we can address the issues that Commissioner Powers has talked about and so we'd like to be heard today.
Well, I'd like to have public works come out because I had, they had to comment earlier in the pre-meeting, Janice. And my understanding of the drainage issue, and you can give us a little more detail, is that the site on 56th Street, which has the real water problem, is unrelated to this tract and you're requiring detention. Tell us, tell Janice what.
Yes, we are requiring detention and that will mitigate any impact from this development. Anything else at 56th Street is related to just the age of the neighborhood and how those structures were designed. And we met with the neighbors and looked at the issue. And we have asked them to provide us some evidence of structural flooding that was mentioned to us, I believe at 1125 Northwest 56th Street. And we're waiting on that and we will evaluate what will be required and put that on a CIP list for future funding consideration.
Did you say 56th Street?
Yes, I was.
That's a block and a half away from this site. What does that have to do with this?
It doesn't. But there is an issue of drainage there that's not related to this site.
My point was that there are issues related to this site that are yet to be resolved. And I think, you know, I don't understand what the rush is on this. It's a question of, I understand it, providing customer, employee parking and there's plenty of parking that's available there for the employees. So I just don't see the hurry. We're obviously working toward a goal that everybody can agree with, to redesign the 58th Street layout. And I just think until we get there, this is premature. This is not a case like it is over on the East Campus where, you know, contract negotiations have dragged on for months and years and so on. You know, we're asking for a relatively short amount of time to, you know, roll up our sleeves and see what we can work out.
Well, I guess my question is, what are we trying to work out? If we're trying to work out engineering matters, we commonly put in a TE that says engineering will be met and go on. If we're trying to negotiate the sale of additional property, that's not within our purview.
Yeah, that's not at all what's going on here. It has to do with the layout of the site. There are-
Don't they want it for a parking lot?
Yes, for now, but there is a future plan to put buildings there. They want to acquire the whole length of 58th Street so that they can use that for parking. And then that will move what was the southern border of the PUD, another half-block south. And so that will necessitate the redesign of the buffers and so on. I just, I think that this is a situation that would benefit greatly from just putting on the brakes a little bit, taking a little time and working through these issues. So that's my motion, I'm moving for continuance.
And I, Janice indicated to me the other night, Sam did also, that that was going to be their position. Understand that my client would like to be heard, the issues that we can do something about, we have answers to. The issues that we cannot do anything about, that being the purchase of three homes to the west, we don't know when or if we'll ever acquire them. So we'd like to have our case looked at just on the merits. Obviously, if you don't believe we've answered the questions at the end of the process, you can vote no or vote to continue it or vote yes, but we'd like to be at least heard.
It's a long way to walk to the campus for employees, isn't it? Or, I mean, is this employee parking? Is that what you're doing?
There'll be employee parking, but this is the class and curve. And so there'll be employees that are within those buildings that will utilize that parking, not the Chesapeake campus.
Commissioner?
Well, I really tend to agree with Janice. I mean, I have a question for engineering and you're right, Nick, you know, we could say you've got to deal with detention or drainage, but with the hard surface parking, does that impact Northwest 56th Street's problem? In other words, the runoff of that, and that's not even a consideration at all. So 56th Street is separate completely from this particular application. Is that right? And as, and you said, I maybe misunderstood or didn't hear, is detention required on this particular application?
Yes, that's correct.
And where would the detention be to prevent, does it slope from the-
We're getting into-
Have that answer?
We're getting into the case.
No, 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 no. Well, I didn't know if, because if the problem with water runoff is a result of where this is, well, then I want to know if there's some more engineering to be done. But that answered my question. But back to what Janice is saying, while this looks like a parking lot and well landscaped, et cetera, and we deal with this on its own, what I would like to see, well, I'm as unsure as Janice is about the entire objective of the full 58th Street configuration. And that's what, I just have some issues with that. And so I would, I would like to continue it and to have some further discussions of further information about what's anticipated on the entire 58th Street.
Well, we've made it very clear, our goal, and I think the neighbors' goal would be, is for us to purchase the remaining three homes and then the neighborhood has indicated that they might be wanting us to do a cul-de-sac and then close 58th Street. However, there's a likelihood we might not acquire the homes. And if we don't, then we will build this parking lot, 58th Street will remain open, the homes will remain lived in and we'll continue on. And so the case kind of stands on its own. Those are issues that in a future time, we need to discuss, but until we acquire those three homes to the west, it'd be nothing we'd do.
Not my concern, but by, not, it's just how I perceive this application is when we worked on and went through many meetings on class and curve. And what you had represented to the neighbors in the residential areas, that this is all that we're going to do, this is the end of it. And now here's a subsequent other encroachment, here's a parking lot, here are three houses, well, there'll be another thing. You know, is it, is it going to impact the entire neighborhood at some point in time? This is what I don't know. And that's why I think that there could be some answers to what it is that is fully intended. That's what I would look for.
And I think we can fully answer those today. I mean, we know what's going to happen if we don't acquire another house. We know what's going to happen if we end up acquiring the other three houses. We know exactly. And we've shared that with the neighbors.
The problem is Dennis has to agree to a continuance or we go forward. I mean, that's-
Does he? We can't vote?
No.
Well, we can vote, but it doesn't-
We can only do uncontested continuances?
Legally, as I understand it, am I right, Susan?
Well, I think if he doesn't agree to a continuance, he wants to be heard, then he needs to be heard. And you can either deny it at the end of that or don't make a recommendation. So we don't have any authority to continue cases unless the applicant agrees? That's my understanding, if he's demanding to be heard. But I guess, you know, if he did, then he could, I don't know if that would even be a decision that he could appeal. I don't know.
That's always been my understanding. We've generally persuaded people to-
But we have continued cases without the applicant's agreement.
We may have if they didn't know to tell us, never mind, I'm going to be heard. Okay. Well, any other comment before we go?
I know it don't relate, I know we're talking about the houses on 58th Street, but I'd just like a question of-
While you want to, on the continuance first.
Oh, second.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and second to approve the continuance. Cast your votes. 1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, 3, 4. It's denied. Be heard and ordered. Any other continuance requests from the public? Moving right along. Russell?
On items requiring separate vote, first item is S P U D 600, an application by Mayflower Congregational Church to rezone 3901 Northwest 63rd Street from the R-1 district to S P U D 600 in Ward 1.
Is the applicant here? You'd give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Robin Myers, the Senior Minister of Mayflower Church.
Okay. And just tell us briefly what it is you wish to do here.
We're in the process of creating a columbarium, which is a place where cremated human remains are interred, as in many other churches, and we're needing the rezoning to proceed with that project.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners? No one signed up?
No approval of the application.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve item one. Cast your votes and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 2 has been continued until February the 24th. Item 3 is S P U D 597, application by Chesapeake Land Company to rezone 112 Northwest 58th Street from R-1 district to the S P U D 597, Ward 2.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Dennis Fox and Tim Johnson, we're here on behalf of the applicant. Dan Ladon is here and wants to say something when we're finished with our presentation. As you review the staff reports, you'll note that this is a single-use S P U D. The single use is for parking. And that parking is as shown on the map that Tim has in front of you. We met earlier this week with the neighbors and I want to thank Rob Littlefield and all those that were present, including Janice Powers and Sam Bowman, both of which came to the meeting. There was issues raised about future development of the neighborhood, what impact it would have. And Commissioner Bright, I think you raised a question and I think it's an important one, that is, okay, what's going to happen with the remainder, whether you're on 57th or 56th? And Chesapeake has committed and the lawyer that is working with the neighborhood, Mr. Perry, we've committed to him that the other lots that Chesapeake owns will not be requested for upzoning, that they will remain in their present R-1 character and they will probably be sold to developers. Chesapeake does not want to get in the business of developing single-family residential. So that is something that we've committed to put in writing in contract form and will do. With regard to drainage, I think your, city has already answered the question, but we are required to place detention in this area and so there will be detention. There will not be any other uses allowed on this PUD, S P U D. And one of the things that the neighbors wanted was a wall on the south end of the property. We're going to place a wall on the south end of the property. And there was some discussion the other night about, well, what about access going, you know, from one point to another? And Mr. Johnson, you want to show them the layout in regard to the sidewalk that we will have along 58th Street? So, so the little sidewalk that's pointed out will go right along where we have, and this is our parking, as you can tell, in keeping with what Chesapeake does on all their projects. There are a lot of trees. We will put the wall up. There won't be any dumpsters, there'll be nothing else. We've not asked that the street be closed. In fact, the street couldn't be closed unless, from our standpoint, it made sense for the neighborhood. And it would only make sense for the neighborhood if we ended up acquiring the three lots to the west. So what you're looking at is Plan A. And we're going to stay with Plan A unless Dan is able to acquire those three houses. If he does, we'll come back with a mirror image, Spud 2, that only allows one use and then probably close the street. What's the likelihood of that happening? I think Dan has to answer that, but I know he has had a lot of conversations and there's a lot of people that are expecting to hit the lotto and whether they do or not, we'll see. From our standpoint, we can only deal with the property that we own. Now, with regard to drainage, that was an issue and I want Tim Johnson to discuss that and then we're here to answer any questions you have.
Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates. And I'd like to clarify, for the neighborhood's sake as well as the Commission, as we've developed all of Class and Curve and where the Class and Curve 2 building is here, all of that has been done in cooperation with the city ordinances and working with the city staff relative to the increased runoff. We provide detention for all this property, all of the increase. We oversize the detention plan on the west side of the property and did a lot to mitigate some of the problems with a very small storm sewer that runs down through the neighborhood. The problem that was brought up earlier relative to 56th Street is, those of you that are familiar with it, the little split T center here and Sonic's here, there's a channel that goes behind Sonic and goes on down and ties into the major stream, which is a tributary to Deep Fork. And our firm has analyzed that basin all the way from Deep Fork Tributary up through all of the small structures that exist and the little open channels between houses, all the way up to where we've impacted here. And we brought that to the meeting the other night. And Chesapeake is also committed to providing our services to the neighborhood to help present a solution that they can present to the city to help solve these problems. But the bottom line, what Adir was talking about was the structures under 56th Street are so undersized that it- are so undersized that it overflows the street some three feet in that area. And in fact, the finished floors that we used to design the split T center and Sonic were all based on the model that we created for that, as well as the bank further downstream. So all of that has been taken into consideration as we've developed this project. So there's not been a disregard. There is an impact. The impact is that we're creating an impervious, a greater impervious area, but we're mitigating that impact by providing detention in every one of these applications, which we'll do again on this site as well. So that's kind of a summary on the drainage. And we'll stay committed with the neighborhood, and we'll take the report that we've prepared, put it in a report format that they can submit to Sam or whoever, the future councilman in the ward, to help maybe bring some bond issue monies up forward. And the priorities on that are based on structure flooding. The higher priority comes from structure flooding, so. And then, as Dennis mentioned, the, one of the comments from the neighbors had to do with traffic and then pedestrian access. We are, we, as part of the Class and Curve project, we did put in a continuous sidewalk around 58th Street. That will remain. 58th Street will remain in its current condition. And then we'll add to the existing sidewalk that was put in as part of the Curve 2 building, a continued sidewalk along in front of this parking lot. There are no other sidewalks in the neighborhood. And so that'll allow additional pedestrian access for the neighborhood. There were some comments by the neighborhood about wanting to put the sidewalk behind the wall that we're proposing here, but just from a safety perspective, it's my opinion and the developer's opinion, it'd be safer to have the public out here, not on private I think that addresses all the items that I had to address. Any questions to me?
Let's go back to the drainage for just a moment.
Yes, sir.
On just this site, the parking lot site, how does that drain?
It goes this direction.
It's going to go down to the south and east.
Right. Currently, there's a detention pond in the...
Okay, that was my question. Where is the detention? Because it's not on this, it's down in that quadrant.
It's currently here. We're going to put an additional detention area up in this parking lot. So it'll detain here and detain here, which is released.
Okay. Thank you.
Tim, on the subject of that parking lot, Commissioner Gales is discussing about where, I now know where it goes, but you described it as being an impervious parking lot. Has consideration been given to other materials that are not impervious, but parking lot, we've had applicants that come in that says, I'm going to do this that's environmentally better because water soaks through rather than runs off? Have you considered that for the surface?
We have not. And if I use the word impervious, I used it incorrectly. We're increasing the pervious area. Impervious would be allowing the water to drain through. As you can see by the highlighted, this is more of a landscape plan, you can see there's quite a bit of green space, open space, being provided. Normal parking lots do not have grass islands and treeed islands splitting the spaces together. So the percentage of open space in this lot is much greater than you normally see. We have not considered a pervious surface at this point. Our experience with pervious surfaces in parking lots, which we've done a couple here in town, besides being hard to get permitted, they need to be on a very, very flat plane. And in this case, this lot drains fairly uniformly at about a one and a half percent, two percent grade in that direction. So at least a portion of it would have to be pervious or impervious. So no, to answer your question, simply no. It's not been a practice of any of the campus parking lots at this point.
We do have people signed up, commissioners. Dennis, you have one.
Just one more thing.
Dan Ladon, Chesapeake Energy. We have, for well over a year, tried to acquire the additional properties along 58th. We've got emails that I can send you if you'd like to see the correspondence back and forth. We may or may not ever be able to acquire these properties, and so we'd like to continue with the plan that we usually do. We come up with a design that fits the area, that meets the needs for us and the development, ask for proper permitting, and go through the proper channels. We have worked with the neighborhood to meet their requests, other than requesting that we acquire all of the homes before we go for permitting on this, which honestly may never happen. We can't force the neighbors to sell, and we don't want them to technically hold us hostage at a price that would keep us from buying them. So we would like to continue on with this and just ask that you accept our request today.
Any questions of Mr. Ladon?
Yes, can I ask him a question, please? The properties that face on 57th, that's south of the oldest parking lot, do your client, I mean, do you guys own any of those properties along 57th Street?
We own one property on 57th that is on the north side of 57th. And if you used your pointer, it would be the furthest east lot towards, it would be this home right here.
Okay.
And we'd like to retain that in case we need to use it for detention of some sort.
If you were able to negotiate the sale of the three lots to the east, no, to the northwest, whatever, would, in your planning, as Mr. Box said, you know what you're going to do if you acquire them. Does this application go away and something else entirely substitutes for this parking lot? In other words, is there going to be a commercial building there, or is this going to be additional? You know, what, this is kind of what...
Well, it would give us the opportunity to come back at a later date with a new plan if that was the way we wanted to go.
What's your plan, though?
We don't have a master plan. We have an idea.
Mr. Box said you did.
We have an idea. If we were to get the entire block, we have an idea of what we'd like to do. But, you know, with today's economics, the curve isn't completely leased, and we can't afford to go build more buildings and leave them unleased. So ultimately, we could add more buildings if we had the entire block. And we would come back before you and present that at that point in time.
The entire block or half of the block?
Well, at that point, it would be the rest of the block, but it would also include 58th Street. So that may never happen.
But to clarify, he's not saying that he would go south of where our existing parking is. He's talking about just the three...
To the west.
Houses that are to the west. When I said...
Thank you. Because I just heard you say the entire block, and that includes to 57th?
No, just to the west.
Our south edge is the edge that we're going to put a wall up. And when we talked about alternative B, alternative B would be extend the parking lot all the way to Military. And if the neighbors wanted, we could provide a cul-de-sac, and then we'd close 58th Street. What had, yeah, what had happened after that, we don't know. Dennis, further clarification. I understood you to say earlier that you've got a contract with the neighborhood that whatever you own, R1, you're not coming south of this mid-block line? Is that with any... We have been asked to enter into a contract, and Dan has said yes. And I have told the lawyer for the neighborhood that we will draft it, and any lots that we own south of what you see as that parking lot will not be... Will remain R1, is what you said. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
It hasn't been, it has not been drafted or defined yet, but that is the concept, that we would sign something that states we're not interested in developing anything south of the midpoint of 58th.
But you do intend to hold on to your lot on 57th? Did I hear you say?
Today, it's very helpful. We may need it for some reason. We may want to donate to this, to the neighborhood as a park. If future detention was needed, we may have to take the home down and put, you know, detention in. So it would only enhance that street.
Commissioners, any other questions of Dennis, Tim, or Dan before we go to protesters? Or I should say, neighbors signed up to speak? Thank you, Dan. I'm going to just read these in the order that they were handed to me. Robert Benham.
Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. My wife and I own Ballyetts...
Before you go further, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Of course. Robert Benham, 1636 Queenstown.
Thank you.
My wife and I have owned Ballyetts since 1991, when we relocated to Oklahoma City. We relocated to Class and Curve in August of 2010. We occupy the parcel just north of 57th Street, between 57th and 8th, in tandem with 501 Cafe. We're on the west side of Grand Avenue, and our parking, which is triangular in nature, is to the west of the store. I think it's very important to contemplate additional parking for Class and Curve because it will aid enormously in the growth and development of Class and Curve. Speaking as a retailer, convenient and safe parking for customers and employees is really a critical factor in Chesapeake's ability to continue to lease up Class and Curve and drive sales tax revenues. I would appreciate very much consideration of approval of this variance.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Benham, commissioners? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could you pull the mic and give us your name and address as well, please?
Patricia Blakely, 1156 Northwest 58th Street. I am one of the three that has left. I'm, I hope I don't cry. I'm in the center. I thought that Dan Ladon and I have been in serious negotiations, in actuality, for the past six weeks. It hasn't been, we've got a notice about a year ago, but in earnest has not started until December of last year. I know my neighbors, the three of us. There's only three of us left, and we all would like to sell. We don't expect to hit the lottery. We just want Chesapeake to continue. We don't want to be cheap sold. And they have offered something they seem reasonable, but when you look at what they've paid on the street in the past, you know, I'm only asking for eight percent more and with shutdown.
Well, I apologize, but I want to make clear that...
Right. And I understand this isn't about the sales, but what I, I would hate to see a partial upzoning of that street right now because it's, we're going to have to endure the dirt, the concrete trucks again, and then they're going to come back, and the neighbors south of us are going to have to endure the same thing over. Piecemealing Class and Curve doesn't seem to be the wise thing to do. And they're, they have a bunch of brilliant people working with them. We can be acquired, and not for a lot. And this could all be done in one fell swoop. And I think that that's the reasonable thing to do. Because this has been, this has been, I believe, fast-tracked, having had an opportunity to really look at what's going to happen. And, you know, just being three houses left on a, virtually just on a street by our, you know, in a parking lot or as an island, so to speak, doesn't seem to be the reasonable or prudent thing to do. And I would just request that the, I know they need parking. I want Class and Curve to, you know, just be a wonderful success for Chesapeake and our neighborhood. And I, they definitely need the parking. Just drive by Saturday about 1:00 in the afternoon, they're in parking space. So they definitely need it. And I want them to have the parking, but I don't want it just to be piecemealed. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Blakely?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Rob Littlefield, 1148 Northwest 56th Street. I'm the president of Meadowbrook Acres Neighborhood Association, and I had a prepared statement. And I think I'm going to do a better job by just ad libbing with this. I really appreciate the discussion today. I'd appreciate it if you could turn around. Your board apparently has changes on the sidewalk.
Sir, Mr. Littlefield, you need to address us.
Apparently, they were showing you a board, some kind of a diagram that had changes in it with regard to a sidewalk. Tim, could you come show me what's different to the neighborhood place?
Turn around. Tim, they want to see it behind you. We've seen it.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak casually. The notion of this parking lot, for the purposes of employee parking to the neighborhood, the urgency of it just doesn't seem to make sense to this neighborhood. At any given time, on any given day, and any given hour, you can drive through the Class and Curve, and the entire south half of the shopping district, from the detention center south, is totally vacant, with the exception of a Chesapeake security vehicle, perhaps. So if there's an immediate urgency for employee parking, that is available. The other thing that's important in the discussion that I heard today is they're suggesting this parking lot and leaving 58th Street open. P.E.D. 1353 was a model accomplishment between the neighborhood and Chesapeake Energy. And one of the top five elements in that was eliminating the opportunity for vehicular ingress and egress between the development and the neighborhood. We worked really hard to accomplish that. We also were able to accomplish a no-parking zone along that entire corridor, north side of Northwest 58th Street and the west side of North Military Avenue, to help limit the number of patrons that may be parking in the neighborhood in an overflow basis. What this does is it opens the neighborhood right back up to vehicular traffic from a commercial district. It is absolutely contrary to what we agreed to do. Totally negative impact. Another issue, I'm not an engineer by any means, but I'm somewhat learned, that entire parking lot drains completely to the southeast. It adds to the added drainage from the C3 site, which is Ballyetts and 501 Restaurant. It is absolutely having a tremendous impact on the low issues on Northwest 56th Street, flooding two residential properties inside. And yes, we are trying to come up with photographic documentation of that, which, if we can be patient, we will. This whole thing, the speed of this thing, just doesn't make sense to the neighborhood. We don't understand the urgency of an employee parking lot when there's obviously an entire plan that's going to happen. What is so important that we understand today is the neighborhood welcomes the entire plan. We welcome the opportunity for upzoning on the entire block. There's been talk about, we don't know if we're going to get those houses in a week. We don't know if we're going to get those houses in a year. We don't know if we're going to get those houses in two years. There's talk about, we don't want anybody having the opportunity to win the lottery. I'm going to say that it took a long time for 27 R1 properties to be acquired to make the Class and Curve. And I will also say that I do believe, based on the assessor's website, that some of those folks did win the lottery. So the patience is there. What the neighborhood would like to see happen is a major, powerful corporation with an awesome plan for a commercial district, to be patient, work with the neighborhood, work with the city, work with three people that live in the neighborhood, that will be surrounded by a parking lot, be patient, give it some time, even if it's a year, and make the whole thing happen at once, and be awesome for everybody. I really think that that's all that's on my mind. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are there others who want to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Kathleen Nieswenger? I should say, for the rest of you, we'd like to hear new information, as you, in other words, we've heard a whole lot of issues, and we're looking for...
Right.
words, we've heard a whole lot of issues, and we're looking for additional information.
Right. This is very brief. Kathleen Nyswanger, 1124 Northwest 56th Street. Today's request to rezone part of a residential block is the first step in Chesapeake's larger plan, one that will have a huge impact on residents of Meadowbrook Acres. Chesapeake has expressed their intent to acquire the whole block for the purpose of making it in addition to Class and Curve, the plan being to add two more buildings with parking, and also petition to have 58th Street closed. Meadowbrook Acres is not opposed to this idea, but we do need to be able to fully understand how the completed plan will affect the neighborhood, and for us to have any meaningful input, a plan for the entire block needs to be presented. And Meadowbrook would welcome the opportunity to work with Chesapeake and the city to find the best way for this new Class and Curve addition to fit in alongside the neighborhood. But allowing part of the block to be rezoned from residential to commercial and approving this development piecemeal would be grossly unfair to the residents of this neighborhood. The Planning Commission and the neighborhood deserve to be given the opportunity to make their decisions based on seeing the whole plan, not just the part being presented today. And for this reason, I'm asking the Planning Commission to deny today's rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Reed, 1143 Northwest 57th. I don't have a lot to add. Everything I was going to talk about has been mentioned, except that I live on Northwest 57th, just adjacent to the new parking lot that's being proposed, and that already, all of those properties have been leveled, all the trees are gone. It is a very different landscape for me, looking out my back door and my upstairs windows. I'm very concerned about the drainage, because the current detention ponds that have been put in place don't work. 57th Street floods halfway down the block, and the sewage water and stormwater drainage that we've had, our infrastructure is -- was outdated to begin with before PUD 1353, and now that they have tied in, these pipes are bursting all the time, down 57th and 56th. So there are infrastructure issues, and I guess the only other thing I would say, just to reiterate, is moving this on a fast track only benefits Chesapeake. It doesn't benefit those of us who live in these homes. We want it to be good, they want it to be good, and we're very close to agreeing. Why do we have to go so fast? On PUD 1353, the largest part of Class and Curve, we all sat down, the city, Chesapeake, and the residents, and section by section of that PUD, we all agreed, and it was great, and we loved it, and it brought great press, for the city, for Chesapeake, and great development for us who live there. Why can't we do that now? Let's just slow down. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Janice.
Go ahead. Okay. Just a brief response, a couple things. Number one, keep in mind, we've continued this once. We continued it, and we agreed we'd go meet with the neighbors, which we did. There are several things that were said that I think we need to be cognizant of. Number one, when the property owner that lives in what's shown up there as seven came before you, her comment was she only wanted 8% more than the other parties had been paid. Well, I'm not sure this commission needs to be in a position of dealing with negotiations on whether we acquire property or whether property is sold. All we can come before you with today is the property that we own. And so we'd like for you to look at that plan. We think our plan is good. It's in conformance with the Oklahoma City plan, and we think that this will not be a detriment to the neighbors, but will be positive both for Chesapeake and the neighborhood. We commit to this commission that we'll continue to work with the neighbors, but when we look at comments that are made that, well, let's sit down and plan it, and let's look at it in a year or six months, what's going to happen in a year if we're not able to acquire those three homes? We can be back here saying, we'll give it another year. We have tried to address those issues that impact the neighborhood, and we think we have. We have a single-use spud, and we'd ask for your approval. Thank you.
Come back. Janice.
Well, I'm not sure I can be any more eloquent than the neighbors have been. It seems to me that it's a really simple case. The developer and the neighborhood worked together over a long period of time to develop a really quality project that everybody was supportive of, that has turned out better, I think, than anybody expected. It was the product of negotiation and time spent looking at the issues. It was not a piecemeal, let's do this, and then let's do a little more, and then let's do a little more. Chesapeake knows what it wants to do with 58th Street. What it wants to do with 58th Street makes perfect sense. Once they have acquired all of the property and vacated the street, they'll be able to plan this site in a way that makes sense, both for the development and to buffer and mitigate the impact on the neighborhood. And the neighborhood wants them to do that. They want to help them reach their goal. This is not something that has dragged on for years and years and years. It's been continued once for a very short period of time. Nobody up here is interested in helping them negotiate with the property owners out there to acquire their property, but we do know that they all three want to sell. So it's not a situation where you've got holdouts and where we're going to be back here in a year saying, oh, we need another year. There's really no reason for this process to be moving this fast. This neighborhood needs our protection, and I'm committed to giving it to them. I would really like to see this application continued.
The problem I'm having with that, I've listened to the neighbors, and I've looked at this application, and the problem I'm having here is this application comes before us and gives us everything we've ever asked for. It's a single-use PUD. You say it's simple. I think it is simple. It's a single-use PUD. It's buffered with an eight-foot wall. Lighting's controlled. It doesn't meet, it exceeds our minimum standards. Staff has zero PEs on it with a recommendation for approval. And we hear, as you said, three people want to sell. Well, I don't want to be a pawn in the sales process. If they want to sell, they need to go make a deal. If they want to buy on the other side, they need to go make a deal. That's the willing buyer, willing seller. I'm not in the lottery business. Whether they are or not, that's not our concern. Our concern is land use, and a PUD application that simply does everything we've ever asked for, that I can figure out, has no recommendations from staff, and yet, we want to hold it hostage for whatever reason.
First of all, I don't agree with that statement. I think that this chipping away of residential area by commercial property is not everything we've ever asked for. When they came in and did the PUD on Class and Curve, we were told, this is it. This is all we want. We don't want any more.
Janice, here's my point. When I say they've done everything we asked for, we asked people to bring land to us for rezoning and rezone everything they control. That's what they're doing. They're rezoning what they control. They've got it in a single-use, buffered, protected. I'm sure they would rather be here with the other three lots. They don't have them. And, you know, so the next application that comes along, if there's some contiguous acreage that could be used to make a better development, do we tell them to continue the application? Go see if you can buy it? I don't think so. But that's my problem.
Mr. Chairman, my comments are preceded by this particular development, Class and Curve, being one of the best things that's happened in Oklahoma City. I admire totally the amount of effort that's been put in, and the design, and all the things, landscaping, I've never seen a development more landscaped. I understand fully what this parking lot is for, because, as you guys have heard, and I've said every meeting that I can, is that the potential parking traffic issues that are going to develop with the continued filling in of the Class and Curve empty buildings and the Whole Foods Market right across the street is a nightmare in the works. Just so, I understand where the parking is, but I'm convinced, primarily because of what the original PUD indicated, in this little neighborhood with these people, that you bought, you know, 25 houses, 30 houses, whatever it's been, negotiated, whatever you've done, I don't care what you paid, what you're doing, et cetera. What I'm convinced about is, the Neighborhood Association spokesman, that the vehicular access to the entire neighborhood is now exposed. You've opened it up, contrary to what the PUD that originally was constructed indicated that you would not let, and so you've got the parking lot, employees are, I don't know who they are, going on 58th Street, down, up, and down, you know, you've opened up, and you have violated the original PUD. That's my whole point. And you've cleared off all the property right to the north of these residents in anticipation of our acquiescence, well, we'll let you do this, without coming into our commission with the real plan. I'm not convinced you don't know what you're going to do. Maybe it's going to be something I think Mr. Box knows exactly what you're going to do and what you want to do if these properties are acquired. I don't care. I care about what our obligation is to people who live in a place where you're trying to put commercial interest and parking interest, drainage interest, and all those things, and I don't think the application is complete. All that, when I said preceding my statement, I admire wholly what this development has done. I like it a whole lot, but this particular piece of it, piecemeal's been used, piecemeal doesn't get it. We thought it was a complete development. This is what we're going to do, and if you need employee parking, I, just those empty buildings right, you know, 100 yards away, you can park there during the interim before you come back with us, with the neighborhood agreement, that this is okay with us. We don't have to have people coming in, you know, off of, what is it, Grand, that comes in on 58th Street, they go around the corner, and da-da-da-da-da. You've eliminated that aspect of the PUD, and that concerns me. I would like it continued. I don't want to vote for denial. I would like to have it continued until you come in and say, okay, this is what we're going to do. That's my point.
I thought, excuse me, Dennis, just a minute. I thought we heard what they're going to do. We've got, I mean, Nick has said it three times, we've got a single-use PUD. All they're applying for is parking, and if they ever acquire the other three lots, they'll extend that parking lot down the end of the block, and if the neighbors agree, they'll put a cul-de-sac there, and there won't be any, at least after that point in time, through traffic. I'm not sure I get the piecemeal discussion. I mean, we've got, they've been able to buy four lots, not able to buy the other three. They may be able to buy the other three at some time. They may never be able to buy the other three, because you have to have a willing seller and a willing buyer, and obviously, up to this point in time, you haven't had that with respect to the other three lots. So, I mean...
I don't think you ought to make that assumption. I thought we were not going to get involved in that negotiation.
Well, no, the point is, they own what they own, and that, and the point is, they may or may not ever own more. We're not getting into the negotiation.
But they could say that on every, and think about the process of the East Campus development. They can say that about every time they come in front of us. This is all we own. We have no idea what we're going to do with the rest of it until we acquire it, and we might not ever, you know? This process is not, this is not, you know, the first time this has ever happened. This is a pattern, that they come to us with a little piece of something, they want the approval for that alone. They have an idea about what they're going to do. They've told us what it is when they acquire the rest of this property. What's the hurry?
Dennis?
Well, I think, just what I've told you the plans are, is what Dan Ladon has told me the plans are, period, end of discussion. But I think Janice's point is well-taken on that. If we go over to the East Campus, if you all recall, there was at least three property owners that appeared at most of the hearings until you all pushed forward our request for rezoning, and after that, they ended up selling, and we're coming back to you on the 24th for the entire campus that we own. So, in essence, you all are being used as a pawn, and we can only proceed with what we have. But you have our commitment, if the property owners adjacent to us, just to the west, want to sell, we'll come back, we'll spud two, and it'll be parking. Other than that, this is all we own. Now, Bob, you said something about the traffic being on 58th Street and that being an issue. We have no problem in one of two solutions. If you want to make right turn only on our only entrance and exit on 58th Street, that's fine. We'd even go so far as, if this commission was real concerned about it, we'd take that curb cut out and take our curb cut back to the east. So there are solutions to what you all have in front of you.
Did you present that to the neighbors?
We talked about right turn only on that very west curb cut.
But I don't think your analogy is exactly appropriate on the other issue of the campus. There were, you know...
And the analogy being property owners selling.
Well, because you're not dealing with three isolated people who want to, as we've said, win the lottery. What we're dealing with is an entire neighborhood, the whole thing to the south, all these property owners that have owned their properties, et cetera, and they had an agreement. And I think, Mr. Chairman, you know, when the PUD came in, it was negotiated and done and done, and the neighbors came in at the meetings, and they said, we're fine with this. All the protections are there. And the protections were there until here's another phase. And what I think the neighbors want is, here's this phase, but then is there another phase, and then what happens to that, and what happens to all these other things? I just think that there's a little bit of work, and I'm not, I don't care about the negotiation of three properties over here. I care about the neighbors to the entire south, and what it is that this addition that was etched in stone, in the words of the PUD, is not going to happen. This is Class and Curve. This is your neighborhood, and I think that when there's a change, the change has to be with the acquiescence of the neighbors that you negotiated with and agreed with, and they have to be satisfied, irrespective of three houses. I don't care. It's the neighbors, the entire Neighborhood Association. That's where I think, Mr. Chairman, my obligation comes in, and not to, I don't want to deny it, I just want to continue it until that process has happened.
But that process has been ongoing. One of the major concerns that the neighborhood had was, Chesapeake, commit to us in writing that you will not develop lots that you own to the south for anything other than residential. We have committed, and we're in the process, with Perry Hudson, of coming up with a contract where the lot that Dan mentioned to you, it'll either become a park, or if it's not needed, it'll be sold. So those kinds of things have been ongoing, and we'd just ask you to look at the application in front of you.
Dennis, I, again, I agree with Nick. I agree with what you said. Bob, I agree with the concerns that you have on the traffic. And to me, that's the issue. It's, there was a lot of work done, obviously, with the prior development, to mitigate the traffic, the impact on that... traffic, the impact on that neighborhood. The concern I have with this is that we're basically eliminating that mitigation that took place there. If you come in here with this and you dealt with that issue, I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Mitigation on traffic?
Yeah. We are now introducing traffic into that neighborhood that where there was so much work done before to prevent that. Now, we're going, we're basically going around the, we're eliminating the work that took place to prevent that.
I think the way you deal with that is you either agree that right turn out takes care of it, or if you don't think it does, then we'll take our curb cut back to the very eastern portion of the property where we're going through an existing parking lot at the present time.
And I think you ought to present that to the neighborhood and work it out with them.
We stand before you and you all have to do what you need to do.
Would you be willing to make that far eastern a left turn or a right turn only?
And be your only curb cut?
And eliminate the one to the south?
I'm going to give my traffic engineer to...
The existing drive that serves the Ballyettes now is a left turn, a right turn in, but a right turn out only. It's got an island in there to direct the traffic back towards class. And what the applicant is willing to do...
I see it now. I do see that.
Is to eliminate our east driveway altogether as part of our application today. We'll just take that off. I'm sorry, the west driveway. And utilize the east driveway.
So, there would be no way that there would be traffic turning back to the west?
Well, somebody has a big four-wheel-drive truck. They do what they want, but yeah, it diverts the traffic and encourages them to go east.
That would be my only concern also.
And we would agree to that.
Mr. Littlefield, you wanted something else?
Yes, I'd like to make two comments. The first comment is relative to what Dennis said about their commitment to the balance of the neighborhood south of the development. In my view, that comment leaves out the three west properties on Northwest 58th Street and offers future potential for purchasing those and upzoning them. And the whole message that we've been sending today is there is a bigger picture than this parking lot and we're not seeing it. The other point that I'd like to make is the discussion about these opportunities for rights and lefts and ins and outs and whatever on this parking lot is completely new discussion for this neighborhood. And the only solution to regulating traffic in this neighborhood is one of two things. No parking lot at all or the entire block developed. Thank you very much.
It was nice longer you had one more comment, did you? You had your hand up earlier or next to you, I'm sorry, in the red. I apologize. Wrong note.
Susan Reed.
Susan, I'm sorry.
Chesapeake has so eloquently expressed that they feel that they're being held hostage by this lack of the ability to do whatever dealings they need to do. I feel like the neighborhood, think of it from the neighborhood standpoint, we feel that we are also being held hostage by this commercial development that is coming in and buying half of a block. It's going to cut it up and it's not going to be contiguous. It's going to create possibly a problem with those people getting in, they have to come all the way around, go all the way out. I mean, it doesn't even make sense. It is, and from what I understand, I thought that the city did not support breaking up a block. I've been told that. And that where you had commercial on one side, residential on the other, that the city would support upzoning, we do support that too. So, let's make them buy that whole block, or let's just make them take that whole block and not half of it and leave the other people just sitting out there on an island. It's not very neighborly. Thank you.
We can't do that unfortunately. We can't make that happen.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think they're really being asked to. They want to acquire it. They know they want to acquire it. They have plans for what they're going to do when they do acquire it. This is not a situation where Dennis said we are being used as a pawn. Well, I think, you know, if that's true, it's true on both sides. And I don't think that anybody up here is interested in getting involved in those negotiations one way or the other. But I do not think that that process has gone on long enough for us to jump into this thing and approve half an idea, which is what we're being asked to do.
Mr. Chairman, that... Yes, James, go ahead.
No, when I look at it, the challenge I have with it is the process is taking place one, we encroaching parking into a community, you know, deeper in and a lot of times we say we don't want to do that because of the impact. And then I heard a couple of things. You heard that it was going to be a parking lot expanded, but then I also heard that we might put some other two buildings if we get it. And I realize that we are talking about this piece of property, but if we have a shortage of parking, of parking now with a development that was developed with supposedly adequate a parking, if we add another building, then where do we go with this additional parking? So, I'm saying if that's even a thought, it could be some considerations of that upfront because this has kind of been a historical way that development has taken place. And I'm not putting right, wrong and indifferent, but it's been taken place like that. We get a piece today, we get a piece next week, we get another piece. So, we keep getting these pieces, you know, and maybe that's the way it goes, but it makes it hard on us when we look at it. And I myself am not interested in negotiation or the purchase of a property, but I do think good planning would dictate, what do we do when we get another building in there? Where do we go with the rest of the parking? Do we go now down to 57th Street? That's why I asked how much property they have on 57th. So, I just think there's still some things that could be worked out in the nature of good planning. So, I would like to continue to...
We're now at a crossroads. We can have a motion to continue it?
Some of.
And a second for that and see what the outcome is. But we're back to the applicant and their acceptance of that or demanding an up or down vote, so.
Well, from our standpoint, we're scheduled on for the city council and so we'd like an up or down vote. And, you know, this discussion of the two buildings, I've never seen a plan with two buildings. There might have been a plan. And I know Rob Littlefield and Dan Ladon have had a lot of discussions. There were probably 100 different plans that they looked at on the campus project. But here, the only plans that I know of is just what I've told you, and that is for this parking lot and if we were able in the future to acquire those three homes, we'd work with the neighborhood and close 58th if they wanted it, period. So, what you have in front of you is at this date, all we own.
Yes, we do. If you have something, is it just, is there something new?
Yes. Regarding the plans for the two buildings at the meeting that we had two days ago, Mr. Johnson indicated where the two buildings would be, and it would be on the east side on 58th Street. So, I think there is more of a plan than we're hearing today.
We can't keep doing this. Is there a plan for two more buildings, yes or no? Someone please tell me.
If we were to ever acquire, there is a plan that there is the ability to add more buildings, but that would mean coming back to you with another plan at another date in time. The only thing we're asking today is for the zoning on this section.
And where would those, in your mind today, where would those two buildings be?
If you look at the development, it would mirror what we have today with a building, parking and drive and a building. So, if you looked at the north, if you scroll that down towards me, you would have the buildings, no, go the other way. You have the existing buildings to the far north, you'd have two rows of parking and basically where 58th Street is, is the ability to add a couple more buildings. We're not asking for that today. We're not asking that next week, next month, next year. Today, we're asking for the zoning for this particular parking area and that's all we're asking for.
Okay, thank you. Janice, what do you want to do?
Dennis, I've got a question. If, I heard you say that you would close the west egress and ingress on the parking lot and only have the one that's existing now, is that what I heard a while ago?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the application by, and one of the stipulations being that we close the west egress and ingress and only have the one to the east, the ones that exist. And is there a sign up there that says no left turn?
If there's not one, we'll put one up.
Okay.
We need to back up. Janice has a motion on the floor and she has a second for that motion.
Okay.
So, we... Pardon? And that's for a continuance?
Yes.
For how long?
Two weeks, a month.
Next meeting.
I honestly believe what I heard, that we're so close to having the whole property that I would be willing to settle for two weeks, but probably a month makes more sense.
So, which is it? A month?
A month.
And the second agrees with that?
I have a question. Assume, and I don't see how they're going to buy the property in a month, they make a contract for it in a month, but assume they do that. And then they want to make a parking lot on the west half too. Wouldn't they have to reapply and...
Well, for anything beyond this track today...
We're not talking about a month continuance. We're talking about before anything, this part can be approved several months, even if they contracted, bought, closed.
If, on the other hand, they're not able to acquire the properties, then they'll only have lost a month.
True.
Okay. First of all, we have a motion and a second to continue the item for 30 days.
Okay. I'll just say one thing about the 30 days, Mr. Chairman. That takes us past the city council hearing date. So, I mean, obviously, we don't want a continuance, but if you granted a continuance, we'd hope it wouldn't be more than two weeks so we can at least keep our city council hearing date.
Can we be real clear on the legalities of this?
Well, I've already told you what I thought.
Well, you know, that's what I thought, you know, I've always thought that was the case, that we couldn't do what we're about to do.
No, I haven't...
Well, I think that once, I mean, if we can have a vote, dispose of it, and then Dennis can say we don't accept that and force an up or down vote.
Well, he's already asked for it, but okay.
Well, but why don't, let's do this. Just continue it till the next meeting and see if there's progress with you guys and the neighbors to alleviate some fears in the event that there is, I'm not saying that you're going to purchase three properties, but with respect to all the things that we're trying to negotiate here, let's close off the west entrance, let's put right turn only on the existing entrance, let's do these things that we're juggling around. But do it two weeks. And then if you guys can get with the neighbors and say, this is what we're going to do with this application and further, if this other stuff happens, this is what we're going to do, so this is the way the neighborhood's going to be. And that's what I think the confusion is and what the neighbors don't know what you're going to do. But apparently, somebody said at a meeting, there's going to be two buildings there and if we do that, then this is what we're going to, this, contingencies. Continue it for two weeks and come back to us.
I'm not sure what a continuance will help. Rob has stated that the neighborhood said all the block or nothing. We can't acquire the entire block in two weeks. We may never acquire the entire blocks. We've agreed to all the contingencies. We've agreed to put up a solid brick wall. We've agreed to pay for drainage. We've agreed to make the west exit not available. We've agreed to put up a right-hand turn only sign. We've agreed to everything that you've asked. We're not going to get these homes bought in two weeks, we're not going to get them bought in a month. We're asking you to vote today on whether you approve our application for this button.
Okay.
That's what we're asking.
Okay. So, we have a motion to ask for a continuance for 30 days. Cast your votes, we'll see what happens with that. One, two, three, four, it's denied, four to four. Now, we have to take action to move it up or down.
Yeah, I'll just repeat my motion. I'll motion, make a motion to approve the application with the closing of the far west egress and ingress to the parking lot and that we make sure that we do have a right turn only on the existing entrance and exit to the parking lot.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item three as conditioned. Cast your votes. It is approved.
Item four is CE 798, an application by Paseo Village, close the east-west alley in Block One in the Spanish Village Edition located south of Northwest 30th Street between North Dewey and Paseo Ward Two.
Mr. Chairman, is there anybody here to speak on this item?
Well, the applicant, of course, but other than that, no.
Well, as you know, I'm not a huge fan of closing alleys, but in this case, there doesn't seem to be any reason not to. The alleyway is closed on further to the east and further to the west and where it's not closed, it needs to be encouraged upon, so I'll move approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item four. Cast your votes and that's approved. Janice, you're not voting. There we are. Thank you. You're done, John.
Item five is S.P.U.D. 596, an application by Bob Gage, Care of GBT Realty, to rezone 3800 South Portland from C-3 and 82 districts to S.P.U.D. 596 in Ward Three.
Is the applicant here? Would you like to come up, please?
My name is Bill Booed, Bill Boo on behalf of the applicant, Bob Gates, GBT Realty.
Okay, this item, we've seen it before. It's been continued. Last time, there was no one here to present it and they've essentially made the site plan changes that we had looked for. No one signed up.
Well, my comment is, is that I appreciate the work that you did to redesign the entrance to go off, what's that, Portland rather than a residential street. I think you did an ice job and I move approval of the application.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item five. Cast your votes and it's approved. Thank you. Janice?
Thank you. Item six is being continued until March 24th. Item seven is C-5730, an extension of the final plat of Abbott Lake, tract six in Ward Four.
And I don't expect anyone here to present this, but it's a, just an automatic, well, it's typically an automatic extension of a plat.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item seven. Cast your votes and that's approved.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I guess I, perhaps I didn't understand what this was. An extension, you'd mean the time for it to be...
Time, yes.
I see, I see.
Yeah.
Item eight is ABC 733, an application by Joshua Furby for an ABC Two overlaying S.P.U.D. 59, O1 Limited Office and C-3 Community Commercial of 2127 West I-240 Service Road.
Josh Furby, 9117 South Chertel.
Tell us a little bit about your business and what it is you wish to do here.
I'd like to open a restaurant, sports restaurant, a little more higher-end. That 3,500 square feet is part of an existing business right now. That's Anytime Fitness is in front of that. Initially, that was used as an aerobics room, so we have a pretty nice-looking floor on there. It's a good-looking design back there. You can see where the...
You're going to be sort of hard to find back there, aren't you?
It's easy access, so it's, right now, you know, with the low visibility, once people know where we're at, it should be pretty good. It's right off of 240, intersection, 240 and Penn.
Well, yeah, I see a 240 in Penn, but you're sort of behind the building and with no street visibility. No one has signed up?
Move approval.
Second. Okay, a motion and a second to approve item eight. Cast your votes and good luck being back there.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, sir.
Item nine is SN 070, an applica, oh, consider a resolution assigning the name Wheeler Park Drive to the private drive leading into and through Wheeler Park in Ward Six.
And the staff report, self-explanatory commissioners, no one signed up? Move approval. Second. Give a motion and a second to approve item nine. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you.
Item 10 is SPOD 599, an application by Camden Park Mini-Storages, to rezone 1100 Northwest 164th Street from PUD 1364 and R1 to SPOD 599, Ward Eight.
David Box, 522 Call Court Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Tim Hughes, the developer of this site. Our application today is seeking approval for a mini-storage along the dotted boundary on 164th just west of Western. In the packet that you are receiving, you will see, the first page after the introduction is the rendering of the northernmost building in this miniStorage. The next piece of paper is the site plan, and it shows 12 spaces. Initially, in our SPOD, we had 10 buildings at 4,000 square feet per building. We've revised that. I'm in the process of revising the SPOD to reflect 12 spaces at a smaller space of 3,000 square feet instead of the 4,000 square feet. The next you'll see is an aerial of the area. The yellow outlined area is the Spud Tract, and the green outlined area is an R1 piece that is also owned by Mr. Hughes that we will talk about here in a minute. There are seven technical evaluations with this. TE 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, we are in agreement with, with the one notation. On TE number four deals with a landscaping buffer, and in addition to having the landscaping buffer, there will be an eight-foot masonry wall along the eastern boundary, southern boundary, and western boundary of the site, except for the area that borders the substation. We would ask to not have the wall be required on that portion. But the rest of it, anything that borders the R1 or any other portion, will have an eight-foot wall plus the, the five-foot landscaping buffer. So with that one notation, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, we are okay with those technical evaluations. TE number one asks for us to take out the southern portion of this tract, being south of where you'll see Northwest 163rd Street. We would ask that that be taken out, and the reason why is, east of the subject tract, as I said, is owned by Mr. Hughes, and he is planning on developing east of the subject tract into a high-end residential area that will be privately gated, and the entrance to that area will be off 164th between, he also has the PUD 1364 that you see, and the access to the residential will be from that. And with that, I'm going to let Mr. Hughes come up and, and tell you guys about his plans for the residential area.
Tim Hughes, the property to the east is technically not owned by me, but my future plan is to purchase that property and, and develop it into residential. The reason for the mini-storage is to have a buffer between the substation, and if you've driven by it or seen it, it's huge power line tower, 50 feet high, and my whole purpose for this miniStorage is to have a buffer between that and the residential. It's going to be a nice, you know, eight-foot wall, stucco landscaping along the side, so that there is a nice buffer between the two properties. We have reached out to Fenwick Homeowners Association, Sonoma Lakes, and they have, we have no protest from the HOAs. And Chuck Bose's property, which is south of that, the 8 acres, has no protest.
Well, you're, just so I understand, you're going to buffer residential from residential with miniStorage?
Uh, yes, part of that, yes.
And we're no longer going to have access, connectivity on Northwest 163rd Street across to the east as we hit it one time.
The, the original, when 42 Western originally platted that development, we showed that there was residential at a gated entry off of 164th, and there never was access for 163rd, when it was approved back a year, two years ago. So there never was an access that we had originally when it was approved last time.
So, so this, this what appears to be a stub off of 163rd? That never was a access into, that never was intended to be a connectivity with the future residential development?
No, our, our, back when we, when we did the original zoning for it, that was a residential private gated entry only off 164th.
Okay, now I'm confused.
I'm confused, yeah.
First of all, I initially understood from Mr. Box's comment that you owned and controlled this R1 land, and you said you don't.
No, not any.
But you intend to buy it.
No, no, I, I was a owner in the development of 42 Western, and the original, the owners that are, that control 42 Western now are investing in the property only. They have no intention of developing it right now.
Okay, but here, here's my problem, is, well, my next question, you say when that R1 property was platted, it's not platted, is it?
No, when we, when we originally did a design for it, we had rezoned for residential and the office along.
Right, when, when you were showing us the design for PUD 1364, you had drawn some stuff in.
Right, right.
This residential area, but that's not platted at this point.
Right.
Okay. And so there, Mr. Chairman, was the thought of, when they platted this area to the west.
They'd connect, yeah.
A stubout was to accommodate that. But now I understand what you're saying is, when you develop your residential deal, it's going to be private anyway.
Correct.
So whether it's platted or not, but now that we've established that...
That, that's my intentions as a fellow builder.
I, I understand, but now I see further, this letter from Fenwick, which is supportive, except it gets to the end, and it talks about commitments you have made, and it appears you're making commitments, one, on land you don't own, and two, we can't get those commitments in this PUD. And I, and I'm, I think I'm going to ask you to, to think through that, and maybe continue this for a meeting, and, and come back and tell us how you're going to do all that, because it, it's becoming problematic, and I think the chairman made a, raised an issue on connectivity. That could become problematic. I agree with your not wanting TE one. I've, I can go along with, with that. I can certainly support the not buffering the, the substation, the modification to TE four. And David, you didn't address TE seven.
TE seven deals with the finish of the buildings, and with our render, this will be the northernmost building, and with the eight-foot wall that will surround, the only building that will be visible from the street will be this northern building, which will be finished out, as shown here, which is in compliance with TE seven. The rest of the buildings, since they won't be visible from any public street, we would ask to be allowed to do metal buildings and therefore not be, comply with TE number seven, because the only way you'd see it is if you were inside of the property.
David, I may have missed it earlier, and I'm sure I did. The wall that was described, it would run all the way down the east side of this site, across the south side of this site, north up the west side of the site, and stop at the substation?
I'm going to do my best to use this little pointer.
Yeah.
Right here. It's going to go down, and then, so the entire east side of the site, and then to the west, and then up to right there, and then it'll stop at the, the substation.
The substation already has a wall in place.
So in, in essence, you know, provide a barrier between any...
The answer to my question is yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You did say the full south side.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Janice?
Well, I just wanted to make the point that we now have a new gold standard with respect to miniStorage, and lucky enough to have it in my ward. And if you go look at the one that's on the old Shepherd Mall site, they didn't even have to come to us for any kind of approval, but it is being developed by somebody who lives nearby, from what I understand, and it's even nicer than the one on Grand Boulevard at May Avenue. It's very, very much something that you wouldn't mind looking out your front door at or across your back fence at, and I would really strongly encourage you to go look at it. It is, it's really, all miniStorages were that pretty, we wouldn't mind having a couple, dozen more of them, so.
And we feel that this will be the same way, and all that we ask is that the TE number seven requirements just be placed on what would be visible from any public street.
David, you said that you're okay with PE, TE six.
Yes, sir.
One of which says that if you use electronic message display signs, would you agree to not have EMD signs?
What, what was that?
That's electronic message display signs. You know, you have a monument sign, eight feet, I see no reason to have some flashing sign or some...
Oh, no. This is going to be more, more like your monument sign you'd have in subdivision.
Right, so you delete that one if, I mean, you'd say, "No EMD signs."
Right.
Okay. And then the other point that we've talked about many times, actually, about the pitch of the roof, you know, you're, you're, you're not flat, your roof isn't flat, but the pitch that TE seven is requiring is a more pitched roof.
Oh, yeah.
You know, do you, would you agree to that? I mean, that, okay. And then what about the mechanical systems, you know, they're integrated, and, I mean, eight-foot, an eight-foot wall only covers to the eve of the roof, and then the rest of it, mechanical systems, et cetera, would be visible within the R1 areas. And so these other requirements here relating to visibility, et cetera, I was, when I got this application, I thought, "I need more information."
Well, Bob, that begs the, the question, when you talk about roof and visibility, are these two-story buildings? How tall are they? What are they going to be?
They're one story.
Are they? Yes.
We, we got written in, we have it written in there, they're not to exceed 14 feet.
Okay.
And that, we did that with some negotiation with property owner around there, that we wouldn't exceed 14 feet, so we wrote that directly into our SPOD document.
Mr. Gales, did you move to continue this item?
Pardon?
Did you move to continue this item?
No, but that's, one of my concerns is how we're going to address some of these things. Now, he's addressed some of them as, as we were discussing, but I, I would think we probably should take one meeting and, and try to address some of these things you put in this letter to the homeowners, and, and how you're going to gain control, or what control we're going to have over that R1.
Are there any of the homeowners here today? Apparently not.
I don't think so.
Well, they don't have a deal because they don't have a contract. They've, they've just written a letter.
Would that be agreeable to you guys?
It is, I just, I'm trying to clarify the, the extension. As far as the R1, it's already zoned, the residential now.
I, we understand that.
Okay.
But the commitment you've made is that it will not be rezoned. Now, we're, you're committing something on land that you don't own, and that's a little troublesome to me.
It, well, it was...
The cost of that land, the economics associated with that land, probably would dictate that you build $300,000 to $400,000 dollar homes. I, I don't know. But, you know, you've, you've, you've made commitments to these people, or representations to them. They've put it in a letter to us, and as far as I'm concerned, now the genie's out of the bottle, if you will, and now it's before us. We need to address it. And some other issues have now been raised about the buildings in the back, and generally, you've said, "Well, we want metal, and they'll be okay, they'll be behind the wall." I think in a two-week time, you could bring us something to, to let us see what those look like. Commissioner Bright raised the issue of, of the mechanical stuff. I, I doubt you're going to have mechanical things on the roofs, but, but, you know.
No air conditioning.
Yeah.
Well, that was just because that was in the...
Well, no, I understand, but Commissioner Powers raised the, the issue of the new gold standard. I'm not saying if it really is behind the wall, we need to meet the new gold standard necessarily, but it would be nice to know, to be able to see what we're approving, and, and that's really not here.
Okay, well, we can agree to two weeks, and we'll bring you back renderings of the remaining buildings.
And one of the things I'd like to know is the height of the wall of the substation plant. In other words, if you're on 160, whatever it is, driving down there, can you see over the wall into the sides of these metal buildings? Is it a four-foot wall, six-foot wall? I, I mean, I really, I don't, that's the kind of information, David, you can bring back and say, "It's this high," and you're not going to see it from the, from any, from any way.
That's a rendering we did today.
No, that's the front, that's the French, right?
This is a, this is a kind of a drive shot coming down there and see if...
Mr. Hughes, we need to get you to the microphone, because this gets recorded, and people won't be able to hear you.
Okay, sorry. This is a, a rendering coming from the east, driving west, so it gives you a, a shot of eight-foot wall in scale.
I'm talking about the other side.
He's talking about on the west side.
The, the power station side.
How big the power station wall is.
That's one I'd like to know, how tall it is, and what, the, the same image coming from the west to the east, what do you see, other than giant power lines?
Hopefully, just the road in front of you, and you're paying attention, you're driving.
And, and then, David, while you're making, or would you, in that two-week period, make the changes? You've, you've mentioned the change to TE four, and the deletion of the EMD that, that Commissioner Bright brought up.
What's happening to the 1364? You're taking part of it. What, what are you doing with the rest of it?
The, the intention with 1364 is to still maintain a residential office park elevation.
And you own that?
No, I don't own that.
Well, you've taken part of it. How, how are you doing that?
I'm, I'm under contract with, it's confusing, but I, I'm taking, I'm under contract to buy this 2.3 acres for the miniStorage, and 42 Western owns the remaining development. Okay. Going to the east.
Okay, so is that a motion, Nick?
Motion for two weeks, for next meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item 10 for two weeks. Cast your votes, and you're continued. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Item 11 is PUD 1430, an application by Bank First, to rezone 13803 North Council Road from AA District, PUD 1430, Ward Eight.
I'm Lex Kudanyah with MGR Inc., representing the applicant. We have gone through this PUD design statement about three times, and the earlier PUD statement was given to our neighbor to the north, and they had some comments. Some of them were addressed, but he may have some more. As far as the application is concerned, we agree to both the PEs, and we just request you to approve it.
Actually, does this PUD cover all the land that your client owns?
Yes.
Okay. And we continue it, asking you to give us some elevation of what, what we'd get, and it appears that the attachments we have to our staff report are, are actual photographs of existing shopping center. shopping center. So, that said, are you committing to us that this PUD will be developed when it comes time for plan review, that, I'm not gonna say it's gonna be the mirror image of these, but it--
Similar.
Building material's gonna be like that, they're gonna meet, that's the standard, that it's my understanding, our staff is going to review your plans, and I want you to understand that and be on record that, you know, if something comes in that doesn't meet these standards, it's not gonna fly.
Right.
Okay. And it appears that these are, PUD says we'll have at least 70% masonry, and it appears that these are--
It'll be more than 70%.
Well, these appear to be 100%. So, I'm just making, making that observation.
Well, Mr. Chairman, my observation is, is that this is one of the few commercial developments that is internally circulated. The one that we had just before, Class and Curve, is one of my favorites, and I admire the engineering, I admire the design of making this an internally circulated development where all the parking is inside, rather than there's a giant parking lot, as your picture showed, in front of the building. I like this a lot, I like the plan a whole lot. I understand the concerns of the neighbor to the north of, it's the back of a building, but if it's more than 70, 80% brick with those kinds of façades, as Commissioner Gales indicated, well, that's just on the property line, but I like very much the way that this has been designed.
Mr. Bright, I would like to thank staff for that involvement, you know, we had a pretty good in-depth involvement in designing the parking lots. JJ and I think they're very instrumental.
And Lex, do you guys agree to the TEs, two technical evaluations, one that's deleting a number of uses, including personal storage?
Yes, sir.
And--
Oh, yeah.
Will the rear walls of these buildings be articulated in some way, or will they just be flat panel?
Those which are on Council Road and Memorial, they will be articulated with doors and windows. It won't be just a wall without any architectural element.
Well, I'm also thinking about the property just to the north, which is at least presently AA and could easily be some form of residential. To me, that's as important as seeing Memorial, seeing from Memorial or Kilpatrick.
I believe Mr. Epperson's gonna address that in a minute.
Okay. We do have someone signed up. So, Lex, we'll hear from the protester and then we'll come back.
Thank you.
You'd be Mr. Epperson, I assume?
Creighton Epperson, yes, sir. I'm here on behalf of the neighborhood to the north, which is Interstate's Oil and Gas Inc., which has like a farmhouse on it that is rented out and occupied. The comments that I have were five, and they were included in the letter which I submitted to you, all this was continued, so I presume that they've given it to you once, or at least twice at this point. I guess my main concern is I'm dealing with a moving target, and the response, and I did get a response back from the owner of the PUD, who basically said, you know, we will comply with all of the city code requirements and all the ordinances if and when we put our specific building plans in place and submit them for permits. And I appreciate that and respect it. I guess the only two main points I wanted to make today is that I'm trying to encourage the staff and this commission, when it comes back before you, to kind of keep these issues that I've identified in mind when you look at the specific plans, if they get back before this particular group. The one particular concern I had was that while we're being told that these are simply suggestions as to where the buildings are gonna be located, that immediately between those two buildings, number six and seven, which are on the north side of this 13-acre tract, which butts up against my client's property, which is the 15 acres immediately to the north, it showed, at least in my depiction they gave me, I couldn't tell if it was a zero-lot line situation, or five feet, or whatever. In their earlier design statements and their pictorial representations, we had a landscaping buffer and some streets, and all of a sudden, now we've got the back of a building there. So my concerns, as I think were expressed earlier, is currently our property to the north, the 15 acres, is, you know, anticipated, as you could imagine, to be going toward residential in some way, which mirrors kind of what is immediately to the west, which is R1. And so our concerns are that buffer zone, in terms of, number one, they have not come back and made it conform at least to a 15-foot buffer. Right now, the written materials they provided to me said, well, you can't read it, but it's 10 feet, but I'm going, but you're required to have 15. They said, well, we'll change that at some point. I haven't seen the change. So I guess my two concerns are, they really are showing a 10-foot, or maybe even a zero-lot line immediately adjacent to our property, that's number one. Number two, I would hope that there would not be a lot of peeping tom type windows leaning right into our residential area. Anything you can do to help us, and the staff can help us, as we go forward to try to avoid that. My understanding is that they're limited to a one-story location at that point, so I would hope that we would have, you know, substantial site-proof fencing along there of a reasonable height, kind of like you were talking about just a minute ago about the mini storage, and you'd like to kind of know, you know, what can you see over the fence, and it kind of goes, the vision goes both ways, so to speak, and that is our concern. So really, my two comments are today is I would like to see them come back and have a better definition, number one, as to what the buffer zone is between our properties. Number two, I'd like to know, you know, how much of a, shall we say, a peeping tom situation we're gonna have, and then lastly, just to kind of encourage everybody as they go through the building permit process, to keep all these issues in mind, and I appreciate your time and attention.
What's part of address, though? The setback and staff and Lex, correct me if I'm wrong, I have gone through your letter, Creighton, is dictated by the C3 regs, which requires a minimum 15 feet.
That's correct.
So they won't be able to do the zero-lot line--
Right.
--thing. Your driveway question, and I'm, this is in the form of a question to you, Lex, the driveway onto, out to the east, on the north side of your property, will it be constructed as drawn on this diagram?
Lex, we need to get you to the microphone, and Mr. Epperson, if you'd just let him do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, right now, it's on about 179 foot south of the north property line.
Okay, so you are, you are 179 feet.
Right, more than what the gentleman is--
Okay, and you were shooting for the split 200.
Just, yes, sir, just trying to be fair about it, just saying, you know--
No, I understand.
--take 90% and leave us--
As I read your letter, you were, the minimum of 200, you wanted the split. Well, he's giving you 179 rather than 100.
As long as he's committing to--
Well, and that's, that was the question, you were committing to what's drawn here. Okay, so that addresses, that addresses the driveway, we've addressed the setback, the tall building, I believe they're one, they're one story at this point.
One story, also the base, the code requires one, one story within 35 foot, and then two-story after 35 foot. But it will be one, one story.
But if you did two-story, your setback becomes greater also. Now, let's take that a step farther. He addressed the speaking, the peaking, peeping tom situation. Are you planning to have windows on the back of these buildings?
We can just go ahead and amend our PUD here not to have windows on the north side.
Not to have no windows?
No windows.
Okay, no windows on the north side adjacent to them?
We also need to clarify, I think, for Mr. Epperson, my understanding is that the rear walls of the buildings are, in fact, the wall, there's not gonna be an additional wall, is that correct?
On the north side.
On the north side.
But along Council Road and Memorial, we will have windows and doors.
Well, and Mr. Epperson, to be sure he understood that, that there's not gonna be a wall, other than the rear wall of the buildings, which is why I asked if these were gonna be articulated.
Okay, I thought there was gonna be a site-proof wall.
That's not correct. You're building a, a site-proof wall along the north side of your property.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, okay.
We say, the wall, is it a wall or a fence? I just wanted for clarification.
We have it on the PUD design statement, it'll be wood fence with concrete or--
Yeah, I believe what your, I believe what your PUD said was that it was a wall made out of wood with, with 24-foot centers or something like that, with pillars. That's really a fence, but it's, if you will, it's a nice fence as opposed to a stockade fence.
I guess I forget, what is the required height? I'm not sure.
The required height for screening traditionally is six feet, and I believe you're saying this will be eight in the PUD.
Yes, sir.
Well, then, the only other issue is Commissioner, is Chairman Yocel's comment about the articulation of the back part of the building, and would you agree to do that?
I will still, I'll still keep the north side without the windows on the north part, only along the common property between his plant and--
But you're gonna have to do something along Kilpatrick and North Council, just for making those buildings attractive.
Yes.
You're not gonna have blank walls facing those streets.
I can't really tell from this site plan, but what, what's the distance between the north fence and the north wall of the building? What's that distance? Is that 10 foot?
15. It's 15 foot.
15 foot.
It's not called out on the, on the plan, but that is the standard setback called out on our base.
But you have no access there, right? Okay, and also on the west side, you have no access. Is that acceptable with the fire department?
I don't have any comment from the fire department.
Could I make a statement, just--
Sure.
--clarification? I believe that if you blow up the diagram, which I've done in my office, they have a 10-foot gap between the northern building wall and the property line. He's indicated in writing, and he's stated to this group, that he recognizes that the code requires it's gotta be 15 feet, and that's what he's going to follow.
He won't get approval, he won't get a building permit unless it's 15 feet, so I mean, that's soft.
I agree.
Anything else, commissioners?
I believe we've, we've pretty well covered the points I wanted to cover. You agreed with the TEs, with the additional proviso of TE three, I guess, of no windows on the north side, which I doubt would be there anyway in this type of development, I'd move for approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 11, adding TE three to eliminate windows on the north wall of the building. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12 is ABC 732, an application by Quail Springs Hotel for an ABC two, overlaying the C3 Community Commercial District at 13-800 Quail Springs Parkway, Ward Eight.
Is the applicant for item 12 here?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff Penner, 4401 Southwest 15th Street. I'm speaking on behalf of the applicant Hotels, or Quail Springs Hotel LLC. It's a Holiday Inn Hotel under construction. We're simply asking for a liquor license so that the visitors to our great city can enjoy a glass of wine with dinner, and as we join the many other hotels and restaurants along that corridor.
We're assuming you're asking for this to be limited to the restaurant and club area, not the entire building?
It's, we're asking for the entire building, simply because of room service. It's very similar to the project you approved at 4401 Southwest 15th, Full Service Holiday Inn, it's a mirror image of that, that you have approved.
Well, that's the one question I had, too. I saw the 80,000 square feet, and I thought we could approve ABCs, cover the restaurant common areas, the ballrooms, that sort of thing, and that covered room service. Am I incorrect?
That's what I thought we'd done, but JJ's gonna help us here.
Historically, that's what we've done, is just the restaurant and club area. Able Commission treats hotels a little differently. They allow them to cater from their restaurant and club area to, to do room service--
To the rooms, it's for room service for one--
Yeah, but for our ABC overlay purposes--
For the overlay.
We don't do the whole hotel, and that was the one--
Yeah.
--one modification, I would, would suggest that we reduce it to the, the restaurant and common area of the hotel, and not, not the hotel--
Sounds like Able Commission will allow you to cater from that point anyway.
Able Commission does allow that, and respectfully, you have approved one building, our Holiday Inn that we presently have, that's been open since April, that entire facility, 80,000 plus square feet, it's 89,000 square--
I'm gonna suggest to you, that one got by.
Yeah, okay, I understand, I understand. But, but we'll, we'll do whatever we need to do, I mean, we're very flexible.
Well, I mean, you'll get what you need from the Able Commission in any case, so--
Yes, yes.
And for any reason you don't, we need to know about that.
Certainly.
Absolutely, but-- Yeah, we'd need to come back if that happened.
No, no problem, no problem.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd move approval, ABC overlay for the restaurant common areas, ballrooms, clubs.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 12 as conditioned. Cast your votes, and you're approved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'd also like to thank JJ and his staff, this lady, they're very nice to help a layman make sure every I is dotted and every T is crossed, and that's very much appreciated, so.
We thank you for complimenting staff. Item 13 is continued, and that's it for public hearing items, I believe. Planning Commission committees, Mr. Hensley isn't here, he's the only one who has a committee, as far as I know. Planning Commission members.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of things. One is Commissioner Gales informed me of an activity going on with the Norman City Council reviewing a potential revision to their lighting ordinance. I saw a summary of that, and it seems to have picked up lots of issues that we contend with as far as commercial development and how lighting affects residential neighborhoods and what the lighting is, up and down, et cetera, and what I'd like to have is staff, you know, paint a copy of that ordinance and maybe put it on a study session agenda for some time in the future to, you know, look and see whether or not there should be some consideration for changing what it is that we do with lighting. First issue. The second one is that at the last meeting that we had before the Planning Commission meeting, there was a discussion about changing what the staff writes as far as approval of the application. It was gonna be some other language. I don't know what that language is, but the revelation, revelation was that the staff gets their part at the same time as everybody else does, and, and they're, you know, they need to have some other language that's softer than approval of the application, and what I'm sure, I'm not sure what we talked about, but I'd like to see that on future applicant, or future staff reports that we have, that, you know, because we're kind of hamstrung when staff approves, when there might be other issues out there that they hadn't had time to consider, that, remember we said, I don't know what it was, but--
Well, one thing we talked about, Bob, was language similar to what we use on the Board of Adjustment--
Yes.
--which suggests that a staff recommendation does not constitute approval, and that the Board of Adjustment members will actually make a decision based on the information in the staff report, other evidence presented at the hearing, and so forth. So it's in effect--
I just like to see that soft--
Staff says up to this point, based on what we know--
Right.
--but we don't know what you're gonna learn in the public hearing.
Right.
So that was the kind of discussion we had.
Just a little more to it than that, because they were also saying not only, not only the information, but they don't always--
Timing was another problem, internally, yeah.
And staff is gonna condition their comments relative to the amount of information they have.
Okay.
Now, are we just gonna give away with the comments that it's recommended for approval or not, recommended for approval, or recommended for not? I guess I had planned to establish that, too, which would eliminate that kind of term "not" or "approve."
Well, we were going to, the discussion was in relation to the comprehensive plan and whether it was in conformance with the plan when we did not have all the information. Recommendation is coming out of JJ's office. Recommendation is coming out of JJ's office on approval or denial, and that, of course, predicated on the input of all the departments, but those comments that we have in terms of the conformance with the comprehensive plan is obviously an integral part of that discussion.
That's Australian for you, I'm not going to tell you.
We got, I think the number of recommendations for conformance with the plan would probably diminish.
(laughing) To diminish, I like that.
There are some cases that are clear cut, but where the other departmental reviews are really irrelevant to the situation. Where there's information, where we don't have all the information, our staff has always felt uncomfortable making those firm recommendations, so those, our staff statements on that are going to be conditioned based on the amount of information they have and need.
Planning Department.
You've probably heard that the joint workshop has been postponed. We don't have a new date at this point, so I don't know if it's March or April or when it is, but when we know, we'll let you know.
The joint, we don't have a date yet. Jim?
Would you consider not having them on Tuesday?
Well, that's when the, yeah, it's kind of the traditional times because that's when council meets.
That's when you can get the council people together. They're more concerned about the council people than us.
Right.
They're expecting us to be more flexible for some reason, because they're paid more and we're paid nothing, so I think it has to do with remuneration. Anything else, Russell?
We had two last meetings of Plan OKC that have been postponed twice now because of the weather, and I don't have a new date for those, but we'll let you know about those as well.
JJ, Development Services, Susan, motion to adjourn?
So, maybe.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, and it's approved.